This conference will now be recorded.
For the next time. The water looks different.
You do.
Good evening, tonight is, oh, can you guys hear me okay?
No.
No. I can shout. Good evening, today is Wednesday, April ninth, twenty twenty five, and I'd like to call the next city councilor. If you could all please rise for the pleasure. Sorry behind me.
Pledge this to the way of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, can we please get that roll call?
Councilor Fox.
Present.
Councilor Casper. Councilor Boyer.
Present.
Tracy, can we ask someone to stop while we're... Third chance.
I have no radio up there, but I can go out there and yell.
I'll take care of this one.
They can hear me. Yeah.
Councilor Blaham.
Present.
Councilor Serbin.
Present.
Mayor Stroben.
Here, thank you. Alright. Hey, yes, it is. But can you please call up any public comments from the audience?
Al Philla.
Al Philla, three six zero one six, Northwest Jenny Grick Road. Wow, you know, we had Los Center University on Monday. And I, you know, sort of challenged everybody that, you know, it would have been a good trifecta to come. Since you were already here, you know, yesterday was a planning commission. And I do have to say I was here and it was, you know, usually, well, I'm not gonna say I was using it. But it was probably one of the best I've gone to, you know, as far as information and whatnot. And actually, two members from Los Center University showed up. Well, I'm not counting them. Well, he's.
You know, showed up.
And so they both said that, yeah, we're gonna show up tonight. Oh, and so we have one. We have one member, you know, got the trifecta, yeah. Oh, it gets you. Anyway, oh geez. You know, so it's hard to say what you get when you just. Alright, who knows what happened in April eighteenth, seventeen seventy five?
I don't know, seventy six.
Oh, for Christ's sake. You guys are charitable. One by land, two by sea. Does that bring a bill? Okay, Paul Revere's ride, then the next day was like Concord and all that. Well, because next year's the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the founding of Los Center. Okay, and what's Los Center gonna do about it? I don't know. But anyway, I gave Hannah one of these sheets on it, and so we'll see. Thank you, God bless America.
Thank you, Al.
Uh, there's a record from the audience.
Dennis, you're not coming up tonight?
Oh, I'm good.
Alright.
I'm a hard shield of the fall.
Alright, any public comments for those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. Kimberly, you're there tonight?
Hello, is it my turn?
Yes, yes, please.
Oh, okay, oh shoot, I was all ready to hear some more enjoyment, thank you. Well, God evening, Kimberly Goheen Elvin. Um, so Clark County, Clark County Council had a meeting yesterday that I'm sure, um, that the mayor spoke at, and I'm sure he'll probably tell you at the mayor's report, uh, what happened. So today, Clark County Council had a nine AM meeting that lasted most of the morning that I was on. And, um, they spoke about law and justice, among a few other things, uh, it's a workshop, so you don't get to speak. So I listened to it, it's my duty, and, um, that has become, law and justice has become my main passion as my son is being what I would call illegally held in, in, uh, the Clark County Corrections Jail system for almost seven months now on a crime that he did not commit, and they all know it. So of course, I put out my judicial prosecutorial misconduct paperwork and this and that. So I'm kind of pretty busy active patriot, uh, serving God, family and country, and the people there, I might add. Um, so I'm asking all citizens to at least listen and, uh, to the, um, Clark County Council meetings. As, uh, had you listened to last year's, uh, meetings and been active, you would have known that your property taxes were gonna go up, and you would have been able to do something because the government serves we the people, for the people and by the people. And, uh, we need more people that, I mean, we had better wake up here, folks. Uh, so that reminds me, in two weeks at the next meeting, I'm going to be, um, uh, telling the public what I believe is true and, uh, is a horror story, and you're not gonna like it, but we need to wake up. So, um, property taxes too, if you listen to the legislation, legislation at all on your iPhones while you're busy. Uh, our taxes are gonna go, our property taxes are gonna go up three percent every year. So, um, let's see here, uh, so anyway, today's one o'clock meeting, I was busy at the meetings today, participating, it's my duty. And today, the council, except for Michelle Belkot, voted your hard-earned tax dollars to defend them against an accusation that they criminally did, and we want that council to resign. So there's a lot of movement going on here in Clark County that you guys need to get informed on, you live in Clark County, okay? All the other stuff is great, poetry and all this, but there's a, there's a issues going on that you must be aware of. Um, so, uh, Michelle Belkot has a lawsuit, her and Rob Anderson, and, uh, your tax dollars are gonna defend, uh, the Sue Marshall, the chair, uh, Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Little and Mr. Glenn Young. And I'm absolutely against that, they should have to, uh, if I'm sued, I have to use my dollars, my social security, and by God, the government is ripping you guys off, and you need to wake up now. That is my duty and it has been for five years now. You know, I love everybody and I do this at my own expense and my own time, I have other things to do, but God has put me on, on this mission to serve, thank you and God is always good, amen.
Thank you. Any other public comments, call from those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. But we have other callers?
We do, but no one back there, they did themselves.
Are there any public comments to be read?
There are no comments to be read.
Thank you. Next up brings the consent agenda, there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion?
So move.
Move in second, all those in favor? I get all those. Opposed, abstaining, motion passed, save your case. We have about ten more minutes of the county today, we'll stop. It's a suit, you know, this is not normal, we don't normally have eleven minutes.
Tax dollars at ease.
I don't wanna scare off the newbie. Alright, we do have some presentations tonight, Clark County Arts Commission and Art Strut presentation, Ms. Margine.
You're gonna have to speak up.
Can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, thank you Mayor Casperman, the city council, the staff and the citizens of Los Center for the honor of, um, being appointed to the Arts Commission of Clark County, I really appreciate it. Uh, so I just wanted to give you a little bit of knowledge as to what happens at the commission, and the commission is now changing several people on the commission over the last couple of months, so they're just kind of getting together and starting. Um, but the, the, the idea is, is that as Commissioner for Los Center, I will be bringing to the council anything related to the arts that is happening in Los Center. And then the other side to that is that regarding the arts in Clark County and what is happening there, I will be being the connection back here and hopefully be able to bring some ideas to Los Center that will help the art scene in Los Center. So that's kind of where we're at. Being on the board for a month and a half, I've been, um, moving around the county, going to different arts events and learning what was happening and who's doing what, how well they're doing, et cetera. And, uh, there's a lot of different synergies in each one of the communities regarding the arts. Some communities don't have any synergy at all for the arts, uh, but others have a lot. And so I'm looking at those, looking at the venues, trying to bring back some ideas over a period of time that will work for Los Center. Uh, I can enlarge upon some things later that I have ideas on, but I won't go into any great detail now. But I wanna say, uh, while getting to know the citizens of Los Center in, uh, North Clark County, I learned something that I think is really important, and that is that a lot of people who live here, if they want to protect the arts, they leave the community. And when they leave the community to do, do that, they're taking their pocketbook, their tax dollars with them and spending it in other communities. When they do that, they're, it's, it's kind of known in, in the arts world and in, uh, cities world that one dollar, every five dollars, if it's spent on the arts in a community, remains in the community. So that's something, is one of the reasons why it would be important and a good thing to bring more tax dollars, dollars remaining in the community to Los Center through the arts. And I know you all think we don't have a lot of facilities, it's okay. Things can still be done, they can be done well, they can be done, uh, at grassroots levels, but they can be done, and it can really help everybody and serve those people who leave on, on Friday or Saturday night to go someplace. So, and in regard to just some of the things that I and my husband have done in this last month, let's see, we went to First Friday in Vancouver and saw what was happening there. Right now, it's a little bit slow in Vancouver because they have all the streets join up. So that hurts the economy, that hurts the arts, that hurts everyone. Um, but it was still a good event, there were some really, really good things happening there. Uh, we also, and so we left our tax dollars there, we spent money in that community. We also went to the Little Arts Canvas, uh, Art Group, excuse me, not Art Group, but event in, uh, Sin, or in Canvas, and we spent money in that, in that area, it was wonderful event. Um, artists donated just very small pieces of their arts, and people walked around, they buy a ticket coming in the door for five dollars, and walked around and saw the art that was displayed. And then, at a certain point in time, you could take the little sticker you have, if you like a piece of art, and you can put it on a piece of art that you want, and then you purchase that for another twenty dollars. So that works really well as well. So we saw that happening, and then I was invited by a filmmaker to, uh, a filmmaker's event in Battle Ground. And it's not, it's open to the public, but the public doesn't know about it, and it's a great, great event. And there were filmmakers there, there were, um, writers there, there were actors, there were musicians, and all of that is happening, and it, it was, it was a great event, we did not see the film, we learned how films were made. And then from that, then I was invited to the filmmaker's home, um, Battle Ground, where he's building an enormous studio that is gonna be good for this entire area. And it's fabulous, he's a filmmaker, thirty years in filmmaking, he's very well connected down in the Los Angeles area, et cetera. You know, he spent a couple of hours brainstorming about ideas. Um, there are lots of filmmakers who want to come to Clark County and film here. But there's no promotional video film that shows that. He asked me and some other people to give ideas of where filming could take place. And I already have some ideas for Los Center, but they have, they need to be run through the powers that be before film crews come here. But they do want to do an advertisement for bringing film crews into this area, so that's a recurring thought. So basically, at this point, all I'm saying is, is that, um, Los Center is not burdened by an art scene that does not work, where we just have a small little art scene right now. But Los Center has an opportunity to drive their own ship towards the arts. And that can be in several areas, in the performing arts, it can be in the visual arts, and it can be in, uh, and I don't have to list all those that are in each one of those categories, but then it can also be in a speaker series. I don't know if any of you have heard of Chautauqua talks, but it can be in Chautauqua talks, and Chautauqua talks are small informational talks, usually with a historical figure involved, but there's just all kinds of ways that you can do this. So that's one of the thoughts for later, as, as we grow and as we work together. I'm, I'm delighted to be here and be on this, this commission, so thank you for that. Uh, lastly, I want to acknowledge the newly formed Los Center Arts Council. They're putting on their, uh, arts fair on May tenth at Sterling Wheeler Park. So participate and go to that if you can, and the council is also, um, making, helping make the mural at the junior high school inside the building, so watch for that, there'll be news on that, so thank you.
Can you remind me what time the arts fair is on the town?
I think it starts at ten, but I, I'm not really sure.
I didn't remember.
But I can get that in time.
Nine to four, oh, perfect, yeah, I thought it was, yeah, okay. And I have some other question, uh, do you foresee like the artists, when you say that, like, do you also picture like theatrical arts coming? Like you have some of the role players, all that, some of the like chemicals.
There's all those kinds of visual art things that I, I visualize, so like, we don't have that much.
I, I show that being at the Wheel Club, can you say it?
Yeah, Holly, really.
Holly Park.
Wheel Club.
Yeah, it's Sterling Wheeler, but it's Holly Park and, and it's building this.
Yep, Wheel Club, yes, yes. It's okay. Yeah, that's the gazebo down below, that's the gazebo down below.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. Sorry, that's okay, no, it's easy to get. Totally, yeah, me too, and I lived here. Just get out of my way. That's okay.
Appreciate it. Alright, we have another presentation, this will be the Clark County Yard Dripping Contract presentation. Uh, Tatum Flowers and.
Joelle Osher.
Joelle Osher, uh, will be presenting.
Good evening, my name is Joelle Osher, I'm Solid Waste Operations Manager for Clark County, and we have a bunch of fun solid waste projects going on this year, and I could talk about all of them today, but I just wanted to say hi, and I'll see you again in a couple of months, I'm sure. We are working on the solid waste management plan, uh, I came and talked about that in twenty twenty three. We have that draft available online, we are getting that approved with our solid waste advisory commission tomorrow night, and we anticipate coming back to Los Center in June or July to get that, we'll do a presentation for you and also do, hopefully do the resolution of adoption, so that's in process. I also wanted to mention that we just kicked off the North County Transfer Station Siding Study, so that's gonna be something that's gonna be interesting and impactful to Los Center, and I plan on coming, working with Tracy and coming back to do a presentation on that as well. We're very aware of the need to do public engagement for that work, and we are on it. Right now, we're reviewing siding criteria, the siding criteria guidelines are listed in the solid waste management plan, so I just wanted to mention that Casey Hunt right away wants to start looking at how her siding, what the criteria is for the siding with the transfer station. And then those criteria are gonna be used, and we'll, we'll be reflecting that when we do our initial, uh, public hearings and outreach on that work. So those are the two projects I wanna make sure to mention while I'm here, and then I'm gonna introduce Tatum, who is our amazing project manager when it comes to our recycling and yard debris collection contracts, so she's gonna be your presentation on, um, the updates and the new contracts, and we're thrilled that we're able to bring good news to all of you tonight, so I'll have her dive into that.
Hello, good evening, councilors, or councilmen, or sorry, I was just at county council yesterday. Um, so thanks for having me. I'm just going to briefly go over the yard debris collection contract, so as you all may or may not be familiar, since the early nineties, uh, Clark County has elected to procure yard debris collection services for unincorporated residents, as well as any cities or town that wants to sign onto the contract, historically, Los Center has. Um, so our current contract is set to expire this summer, and, uh, excuse me, last summer in twenty twenty four, we went out for a competitive procurement process for these services and selected Waste Connections of Washington as the most cost-effective and qualified contractor. And this contract is a ten-year contract with two two-year extensions, you can look to the next slide. So just a brief overview of the services that are provided, the service provider is Waste Connections of Washington, there are two different service types, this is basically the same contract as the last contract. Um, every other week is our first service, and then on-call is our second service. On-call is just any resident who wants to have a cart, but then call Waste Connections to have it come picked up at their convenience. It's still a ninety-six gallon cart, we are just changing it from the left picture, which is the yard debris cart that all residents probably currently have right now, which is teal color, and transitioning to a green color over to the right, so that's the main difference of any of this contract language, um, so to speak. So all material that is collected in this is just your, whatever in your yard besides your office. Uh, so plant, cross clippings, branches, twigs, maybe some, we can go to the next one. So what is the contractor responsible for, basically the big bulk of this, all the personnel, including live local customer service agents in Clark County, maintenance drivers of the trucks, education and outreach for these services, as well as management. They are also responsible for all the procurement, all the equipment, including the carts, the trucks, the maintenance facilities, as well as the local customer service, uh, center or office, where customers can go in and pay their bills or ask any questions. Um, as well as for billing and information, any education information that is provided for these services, Waste Actions is responsible for that, as well as billing customers. Next slide. Uh, press one, please, thank you. So for county contract manager, my responsibility is to monitor and to make sure that they're in compliance with this contract, including any, um, annual legal documentation, as far as insurance, bond requirements, the eligibility, as well as data and reporting. Um, next slide, or next one, thank you. So I'm also responsible, and the county is responsible for annual write reviews of these, uh, customer, or customer collection rates, so annually they are adjusted for, uh, inflation. Next, thank you, is the communications with you all, as if there's any changes on the contract, we will be in constant communication with the cities, as well as, um, with the contractors, so we are always in, uh, communication with them. Planning a preparation for any new state law mandates, as well as changes, we are just keeping abreast with that and will inform any of the cities as well, so, next slide. City, how will you all benefit, obviously from the competitive procurement process, low, um, pricing, as well as no contract oversight and same time. So these are the collection rates, uh, again, I know it's kind of hard to see, but there is no changes except for on the top line, all the way to the right, for every other week, the current rates, kind of your second, uh, column over currently for the current contract is eight fifty for every other week service, and for the new contract, starting August first of this year, it's eight twenty five. So then you can go down a few rows down, on-call service, you rent a cart for one ninety-two a month, and then per pickup is six thirty, again, from the current rates now with the current contract, as well as the new contract, all the rates are the same. So the only one is that every other week can actually decrease twenty five cents. Next slide. Um, if y'all are not aware of, all Clark County residents, I invite you all to download the Recycle Bright app, you can enter your address in, um, and it will send you collection reminders as what your services are, as well as you can look up any waste material item you try and get rid of, and it will tell you how to properly dispose of it, recycle trash or where to, uh, take it, so that's it, if you have any questions, okay, thank you.
Oh, I have a quick question, is there a point in the contract for the car rental, like, no longer has to be paid because the customer has basically kind of paid for its value, or is that just every month?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, I really like that, um, I would keep that in mind for future contracts.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. I really like that. Um, I would keep that in mind for future contracts as it states right now is currently they.
Yeah, yeah, I agree because I've had it before, so I know it is. So but that's why I, I mean, it seems cheap, although cheap, I bet if you have it for forty years, it's like, well, why did I pay that? I mean, what's the value of that? So can someone go out and buy their own?
Um.
Yeah, I'm going to do that.
That's a good question. Hold on one.
Or is it kind of like the garbage cans where they have to be a certain size to really be picked up? Or the, he's already, what was the question? Well, I was wondering, like, can someone get their old yard free? Can, like pay for it without having to pay two dollars a month or?
But can they purchase their own?
Yeah, exactly.
That is a great question.
Well, yeah, or can, is there a point where you pay for your cart? It's in value and you no longer need to pay the one ninety-two if you flip out a residence hog enough, like, and you've basically paid for it.
I think it's a really great question. Right. You don't have that, it's okay now. Yeah, but we do know if however long you hide your cart, if it's worn, if there's mold, if something, you can get a free replacement. So that's sort of, there's no, so there's no replacement cost. So if you were to purchase it, then you'd have to purchase it again. Whereas just paying that dollar, no matter how many, if your cart gets it, it means they replace, they come and bring it for replacement. So I change that kind of cost.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
We always get new questions in these councils though.
Exactly. So I mean, yeah, if we don't pay for the garbage can, especially if we did, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
We want to just go buy our own.
Yeah. And, and in every other week, that's included in the cost. So.
Right.
Well, and I can see where you'd want the same size and shape, doesn't the?
Yes. There's the garbage can, it wasn't there, man.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be nice to see you guys park or, or whoever's doing this department with some nonprofits in the area, kind of like Waste Connections does with the Paintland Ape Project. So you can purchase them and get a different colored cart to support those causes. That'd be kind of nice to see. Uh, my question to you though is the, um, I think a couple of years ago, maybe, maybe it was last year. I don't know. Time just keeps going by so quickly. Uh, that you guys came by or Waste Connections came by and said that we can put some food waste in the yard debris. Is that still the case or?
Under this current contract, it's only yard debris.
Only yard debris. Okay. So then we need to re-educate people not to put in their scrap food in the.
I think we're always working on educating people. I think that's going to be an ongoing thing for us. We are actively working on getting the availability of subscription service for food waste at the curb for all. That's something we're working on. We are dealing with capacity issues at the transfer station. So we don't have capacity to accept all of that from us. So City Vancouver has a pilot project, Save Richfield has a pilot project where they, they have that as part of their recycling and, uh, yard debris collection comprehensive contracts with Waste Connections. For the county, we don't offer that yet. We, we wish that we could and that's actively something we're pursuing. We have a B compost program that's trying to work with the cities to sort of supplement and fill the gap between those. I don't know if you would speak anything else kind of for that job, but we push through.
Uh, I don't exactly know where the location is in Los Center, but basically B compost is a, I don't know if you're familiar with it.
I have a pre-speciation.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Yeah, I know, I know that, I know that team was up here recently because we've been trying to expand out to make sure that there's coverage in all areas of the county, just to kind of fill this gap while we work on citing a new transfer station, building some capacity in our regional solid waste system. And it's a need. It's expressly committed. People want to do it. And I have never seen so many people passionate about composting. And so even just going to different city councils, we hear from the residents how much they want that. And we're doing our best to facilitate that. Tatum works a lot with legislative groups and making sure that we're in alignment with the new organic management laws. So we're absolutely, it's, we're, we're doing what we can. We're just limited with some aging infrastructure and things to go with, um, trying to provide a service that we want to make sure.
I think you guys did an outstanding job, especially if you got the Lord, uh, Bill, I think the rest of it. And, uh, everybody sitting up here is probably pretty happy and smiling because when we had Waste Connections here, back there, so I'm not picking on you, uh, it was pretty volatile.
Yes.
With the rising costs and inflation and everything else. So pat yourselves on the back. You did a great job.
Yeah, our, our council was very happy yesterday about it too. It's like sometimes it's just having a little bit of good news. We have a lot of inflation, a lot of increases across the board, a lot of things. So we're doing what we can.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, ladies. All right, council staff report and announcements. Um, Mayor's report. I want to extend a very big thank you and appreciation, appreciation to Tracy and other Burt's staff um, for the community center. I, I can't express how great of a job it did. There, there's almost no words. And it is a huge transformation from what it once was. And hopefully this takes us into the future for quite, quite a long time. Uh, I know there's a few minor adjustments that we need to make to it. And we were aware of some of it and some of it we learned when we got more recruits in practice. You guys did an outstanding job in, in a short amount of time. And I, I think over time you'll come to appreciate that when, uh, when Wheels on Wheels and all of them are coming up. And you know, this works pretty well. Thank you. So thank you, Tracy, and make sure to thank your staff as well.
Well, thank you.
As Kimberly and, uh, Tatum, uh, announced, yes, I was at the county council meeting yesterday to speak. Uh, I'm going to leave that one, uh, to our planning commission when they come up at some point in the near future to update uh, the city and the council staff on, on what took place there and what's currently taking place with our company. Um, I do have one exciting announcement right now that I want to bring to your attention. It's not set in stone yet, but it always helps to make the announcement and let people send thank yous to Senator Oberon, Representative Obano and Representative Orca. As of right now, there is four hundred thousand dollars for the new downtown that's been set off in the new, uh, budget for Washington State. So we have sent off a letter or an email, uh, if you guys all would like to, uh, we can get you email addresses and such so you can thank them. With that, uh, I think I'm going to turn it over to the attorney's report. Janine, are you with us tonight?
I am, and I don't have anything to report, just happy to, um, continue to help you however I can and to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Any questions for the attorneys? All right, Janine. Well, thank you for being with us tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is council comments. Council member Fox.
Hello, good evening. Good to see everyone and some new faces. Even my neighbors are here tonight, so very exciting. Uh, yeah, I, they went to the, um, university classes, so they're going to join that. So good to get that feedback. Um, yeah, I attended the, um, opening of the new Wheel Club. So that was wonderful to get to experience that. You guys did a wonderful job. That was just a wonderful, I think it's a soft opening. We might be doing it again, I hear, but, um, you know, I grew up in that building and so it's so nice to see my grand, great grandchildren could go on to enjoy it. So maybe someday, I'm just saying. It's just, yeah, the building's going to be around for a while, is my point. Yeah, no, right, yeah. I'm just saying, I, it's, with the updates, I think it'll be a while. So it's very exciting. Um. Um, yeah, other than that, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member Casper is online. Council member, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, okay. Well, I apologize for not being there. Uh, we're still out of town and it got on a little bit late. So I, sorry I missed the public comment period. Um, well, it's a lot better being there live than it is on the, uh, online here, um, especially when there's some that don't use their microphones and it makes it really hard to get through. So, uh, but other than that, I don't have any particular comments. I look forward to seeing the Wheel Club when I get back home.
Thank you. Uh, and enjoy your vacation, councilman. Council member Boyle.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I do apologize that I couldn't be there tonight. I had something come up, but.
Council member, you're cutting out. You're cutting out. You're kind of like here in the valley.
Yeah.
They still with us. Council member Boyle.
Just proud.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to council member Layon and, uh, yes, uh, council member.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Man, yeah, technology is getting the best of me these last couple of meetings, but, uh, yeah, apologize I can't be there tonight. I don't have too much, but, uh, thanks everybody for coming out.
Okay. Council member Layon.
Well, I attended the, we've been coming to on, uh, uh, at noon on April seventh, Monday for the Wheel Club and it was really nice. It's been beautifully remodeled, like, as we were saying, and, uh, a really nice crowd showed up. And, uh, so that was just our shop opening and, uh, we were supposed to have a hard opening later, but it was really, really nice. And then that evening, I went to the Center of the Republic of City and I learned a lot and continued to learn. And it was very, very well done. Very happy about that. Um, I also attended a Lions, no, not Lions, uh, sorry, Kiwanis meeting last week. And they're just getting started just the last couple of months and they meet on the first Tuesday of each month. And it's Richfield and the Center Kiwanis together. So anyone that's interested in joining that, you, uh, meet at the Center Church at eleven-thirty. And, um, they, they have a little time to eat and then the meeting's from like twelve to one. And so it's a really great organization and they really work on helping children in different ways. Also, I don't want to forget Lions Club and Lions Club is a great organization that's been going for a long time here in Los Center. And maybe on the first and third Thursdays at the New Phoenix, you can come at six and socialize and, and order some food. And the meeting actually starts at six-thirty on the New Phoenix. Great organization, helps people of, of all ages, all over the world. And they do a block here in the center. They have the Christmas, at Christmas time and they, uh, Fourth of July are our days and just on and on and on. So anyone that wants to volunteer, there's two great organizations there. And I want to say that the Lions Club was having pancake breakfast and an Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April nineteenth, from eight AM to ten AM at the Center High School Commons. Pancakes, sausage, bacon, hash browns, only five dollars. And there'll be an Easter egg hunt at ten AM on the high school football field, ten years old in him. So if you have kids or grandparents, have them bring a basket and have a lot of fun hunting Easter eggs. So I think that's about all I have.
That was good. Good reminders. Council member Sibby.
Thank you. Um, I have a few announcements for Los Center United. And the first line is Friday, April eleventh is family night out, dinner is dinner together. And eighty-eight percent of Los Center High School students who eat dinner with their families most of the time choose not to use. Um, that's baby, tobacco, alcohol or cannabis. So that's an important thing to keep in mind, uh, for not only your children, but your grandchildren. And, um, you know, just, uh, check it out and, um, get your families involved. The next Greenagers Next Chapter event addressing youth mental health and digital age is scheduled for Monday, April fourteenth from six to seven thirty and that will be at Los Center Middle School Commons. I have a bunch of books.
Thank you.
Um, Casey didn't mention that, uh, Los Center Little League is still looking for, um, volunteers and people that help in the Little League concession stand. So if you're interested in that, check that one out. Um, you can contact president@loscentrlittleleague.com. Um, Friday, April eighteenth, we've got the Los Center, the city of Los Center Blood Drive and that's here at City Hall. Um, and that will be from eleven to five PM and there is a critical need right now. So get everyone to step up for that one because I know there's always situations in our lives where we can make use of that domain of one. Friends of the Los Center Community Library, I guess, Saturday, April nineteenth as well and that's ten AM to two PM. And that's another great group here in the community that puts on a lot of events for our youth and adults. We've got the Drug Take Back, drug alert on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, ten AM to two PM. And that will be at the Los Center Police Department. And, um, there's a flyer in the back, so pick that up on your way out and pass the word. And Team Paint Night is back on Saturday, April twenty-sixth. And that's for youths sixth to twelfth grade from six PM to eight PM at the Los Center Church. And finally, I know you were all hoping for that one. Um, Our Days is also looking for volunteers and sponsors. So if you wish to step up and get involved with that, um, goes at loscenterourdays.com. And you can also contact Sam Blackbird directly at five oh three, 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 five, five, four, six. We're done now. And, um, so please step up and, um, subscribe to the Los Center United newsletter. That gives you a whole list of all the information and activities going on in the community and keeps you connected. And they do a great job. So thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you, councilor. That, that was, uh, very well informed, actually. Uh, and just add one more. The league, the baseball and softball opener is this Saturday. Is that correct, councilors? Casper and Boyle.
Yes.
It is. It's Saturday. Do you have a time?
Twelve noon.
Twelve noon. Okay. Yeah, I know. I'm still looking to see if I can make the perspective. I will, yeah, anyways. Uh, so if you're, you got time this Saturday, come on down and watch some, uh, baseball. It's actually very entertaining, uh, to watch some of these kids, uh, throw balls and, and get, stand around and pick grass. It is a good time. All right. Uh, this is Doc reports. Tonight we have a twenty-twenty-five Transportation Capital Facilities Plan Staff Report. Ms. Tracy Coleman will be presenting. Tracy?
Okay, um, basically what this is, is it's just an update to our twenty-twenty-five capital facility plan for transportation. Um, and I'll just give you kind of a summary of it because it's better for everybody to read. Uh, the previous transportation capital facility plan was updated through two thousand twenty-six. The comprehensive plan that we're currently updating uses a planning range from between two thousand twenty-five and two thousand forty-five because it's a twenty-year plan. So to be consistent with our comprehensive planning forecast, you need to have your capital facility transportation plan match that up. So we have to reanalyze our existing transportation capital facility plan that goes through twenty-six to look at the same twenty-year period as our comprehensive plan that we're updating right now. So in order to do that, we need to pick up where we last, last left off, two thousand twenty-six, which is this next year. And we need to say we need to go from two thousand twenty-four, excuse me, two thousand twenty-five to two thousand forty-five. So what this basically is, is that it's a change order request for the current contractor to pay them forty-five thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars to look at an extended twenty-year plan that will match up our capital facility plan to go with our comprehensive plan for transportation. So hopefully that makes sense. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me, councilors, and I'll be happy to ask. I'm answering. I'll ask you back what you want to know.
Councilors, do you have any questions for Tracy? Questions?
Is that too cheap for you?
Um, yes. Yes, we did negotiate the price down, so.
And you are looking for a recommendation, right, Tracy?
Could you please repeat that?
You are looking for a recommendation, right?
Yes, I'm looking for an approval, please.
So any questions, comments, uh, conversation between council, Casper, Boyle, you guys there?
I think I'm good.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that city council to update the C E V in the amount of $45,885.
Yeah, you wrote that correctly, yes.
It looks like- Okay, Mayor, I moved the city council to update the C F P in the amount of $45,885 and authorize city staff to complete a professional service agreement with D K S.
Second.
It's been moved in second, um, since there is money involved in this one, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Nope.
Councilman Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Leah?
Yes.
Councilmember Serpenee?
I'm standing.
Motion passes, thank you, council. Next up, we have the Community Development and Public Works Staff Report. Uh, Ms. Tracy Coleman will be presenting, yeah, Tracy?
Okay, so, um, first and foremost, I would like to share that we have a position open in the Public Works Department for summer labor, so if, uh, any of the councilors know anybody or any, any high schoolers or any college kids coming back or anybody who's in between jobs, um, and would like to come work for us for the summer, it's about a four-month job, we would encourage them to apply. So that position is open right now, and it'll be open through the end of the month. So we ask people, if you know anybody, to please apply for that. In regards to our public works operations, um, I want to thank everybody for being in the Riverbend Cutting Ceremony and, and the councilors that were able to make it and, and for the compliments. It was, uh, really to get, to get the contractor and myself and the public work staff working together and also working with the mayor in regards to, uh, his envision and what he wanted to see, which is what led it to be what it is today. So thank you for all the compliments, but it really goes on to others, I just basically managed it, but you're welcome and, and I thank you for that, for having the money to do that, the grant. Um, in conjunction with, um, the, some of the tree removal that we did around there, we also poured some sidewalk. We had a, a poor sidewalk there that was, um, not really ADA compliant, so we removed some concrete panels there around the community center and, and we had a tree that was uprooting, uprooting the panel, so I thought it was great that we pulled that out and flattened that out. Put the benches, I think that's, makes a big difference. We also, um, cleaned up, and I don't know if anybody noticed, all of Holly Park, we cleaned up all of the lights, replaced all of the lights with LED lights and, and doubled the lighting capacity at Holly Park. So if you look there, you'll see all the new LED lighting in there. And then we've, uh, applied some of the zinc application to the parking lots and some of the, the sidewalks around town that we maintain and Sturmerl Park for moss control. The other thing, uh, to pay attention to that if you go out there and look is, we also painted, um, the Center Little League, uh, has a contract with us and they needed, uh, some help this year, and so we actually took over it and replaced rot on the buildings and painted all the buildings and, um, made that match the community center. But then we also trimmed out the blue to match, so it kind of all blends in. We also pressure washed all the roofs and, um, so really if you go out there and look, and the park has a, a, a total makeover, including the batting cages and everything. So if you look out there, you'll see that it really has a, a cleaner look to it. And then, uh, we can help, make sure that we help the Little League maintain that from here on out, so they can move forward, uh, with a clean slate. And so then we're gonna move to our stormwater, uh, we will have the street sweeper out again to be cleaning up. Just please make sure that, do not blow your leaves into the streets, we ask that the council members get that out to the community. And our wastewater plant, so at our wastewater plant, a couple things, so as always, our parameters remain well within the N P D E S permit guidelines, so we're good there. Uh, I want to let you know that our Influent Screening System 2 failed as a result of a broken drum coupler. And so system number one was down for a rebuild, the plant operation team assisted with Tappany, which is a contractor that we hire out to in an emergency type situation. Um, worked late into the hours to get the system one up and operational. And then the system two drum coupler has since been repaired, so we're up and running again. The broken utility water line that we had at the plant has been repaired as well, and Public Works partnered with the wastewater treatment plant to do that. We believe it was due to a freeze, but that's been repaired. And then we had two half horsepower pumps in the plant drain wet well that basically went out of operation, so, um, the staff was manually pumping that, but the replacement pumps, um, will be procured, we haven't received it yet, and then we'll install those. Our staff attended a P N C W A, which is a, um, section meeting, and it was at the Three Rivers Wastewater Treatment Plant towards Longview, and the course topics included UV disinfection, which is what we use at bio solids and processing permitting, digester operations, and some more topics as well, but our staff attended that, all of our staff attended that. And it also worked towards some of the C E U hours that they need to maintain their certification at the wastewater plant. Um, nothing too much to report on engineering, except for what the staff report that I read today as far as moving the transportation capital facility plan now into our comp plan, which we already talked about, um, prior to this. Um, all the projects are kind of just in limbo right now while we're doing engineering, so on and so forth, and, and working with utilities for Four Street. The building department, we had, uh, Phase 2 at Highland has seven homes under construction, and Stevens Hillside has 16 homes under construction, Lockwood Meadows, Meadows, excuse me, has nine, or Meadows 12. There's two homes being built in Gordon Crest Phase 2, and one home being built at North Fork Avenue. In regards to our overall applications that were received, um, to date, we have 60 applications, um, in community development that were received, of that, 11 are land usemittals, we have 19 new residential to date, and we have 41 other. Again, the others are like roof, um, rideaway, mechanical, plumbing, so on and so forth, repairs, solar panels, et cetera. So that's all I have to report for Public Works, if you have any questions.
You sure that's all you've got to report?
Um- I have more, but you can read it.
Great job. Uh, any questions for Tracy?
Tracy, this is Councilmember Casper, I just want to say thank you for everything that you're doing, uh, not just everything you've done at, uh, Holly Park lately, but everything that your staff does, I think has been amazing.
You're very well known, that's what we're paid for.
Hey Tracy, I was just wondering on, um, map number 14, that section there, um, what is that again? Manning Meadows, um, I see that they did their pre-app conference back in February, has there been any further action taken on that with, um, going from LDR to MDR?
No, not at this time, we have had some email correspondence, but we have had, uh, staff unavailable due to illnesses and vacation, uh, so we probably could have an updated next council meeting for you. But we don't have anything moving forward on that at this time.
Okay, and that's something that'll be brought to council?
Um, yeah, it'll be brought to council i- if, let's see. How do I answer that? If, if anything needs to be brought to council, it will be, but typically it's, goes to the planning if we need to do anything with development. Uh, but if there's anything that has to go, it would go in front of, um, what's the name of, uh? Hearing, yeah, if we have a hearing on it, thank you very much, could be a good word. So if we have a hearing, but typically anything with land use and such doesn't come to council unless we're updating the land use, so it isn't, we don't bring developments to council, it goes to our planning commission or it goes to the hearing examiner.
Okay, I was just curious, because I thought we had just, um, talked here a couple months ago about, um, keeping that plot of land as LDR, so when I saw that it was, they had applied to move it to MDR, I just wanted to know if we were gonna be able to have a discussion about that before anything was decided.
Yeah, that goes to the planning commission, and if, if the planning commission has anything to bring to council, it'll be brought there, but it, it really follows the process, so that's the purpose of the planning commission and the hearings examiner, if it can be switched out, and if staff recommends it, then it will be brought to council at that time.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Tracy? Thank you, Tracy, great report. You know you suck the bar roughly, no, right?
Can you update my house in a week?
Yeah.
Uh, council, we haven't gotten beyond finish, but- How about any new? All right, well, then I will entertain a motion closely.
Second.
I-
I said the wrong thing, sorry.
Twilight, so it's night. I will entertain a motion for closely.
Sam.
All those in favor?
See, I'm sitting over here.
Thank you, council, thank you. It's great to see you, thank you.